Nobody is backstage. Everybody should be. Our panelists and participants should all be here. And our attendees are in listen-only mode at this point. But you're welcome to raise a hand, I believe, or add a question in the chat bar. And we will take it from there. Welcome. And Rosie is here if you need us. Need, I only, there's only one of me.
Thank you, Rosie. I'd like to welcome everybody to our third Town Hall meeting to discuss the changes going on legislatively for our APRNs in the state of South Carolina. Right now, we have two main bills that we are going to talk about tonight. Senate Bill 669 and Senate Bill 45. So I'd like to welcome all our other panelists to this meeting. And I would like to introduce Nikita Barnes to tell us about SCNA, who is also sponsoring this meeting with the Coalition for Access to Healthcare.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hello, fellow nurses. I am Dr. Nikita Barnes. I am the president-elect of the South Carolina Nurses Association. I am bringing you greetings from the premier membership organization for the nurses in South Carolina. As a vital force in healthcare, your leadership, skill, and dedication continue to elevate patient care across our state. So the South Carolina Nurses Association recognizes that this is a pivotal role that you play, not only at the bedside, but also in shaping the future of healthcare policy. And so now, more than ever, we need your voices heard in that legislative arena. We urge you to stay informed, to get involved, and advocate for the full scope of practice, equitable access to care, and policies that support our profession. Legislators need to hear directly from those of us who understand these challenges, those solutions within our systems, and that meaning you. Whether through writing, calling, or meeting with your representatives, your engagement can drive real change. So together, we can advance nursing practice and ensure healthier communities across South Carolina. So this session will inform you on how you can influence change. So let's stand united and lead the way forward. Because when nurses speak, lawmakers listen. Again, welcome.
Thank you, Nikita. Nikita, is TK on tonight?
Yes. He was in earlier.
Hello, everyone. I am on. I am not on camera, but I am on. Good evening, everyone. TK Curtis-Pew, Executive Director of the South Carolina Nurses Association. I will say ditto to everything that has been said thus far. And we're going to jump right in. So I'm going to yield my time.
Okay. Thank you, TK. I want to tell everybody to make sure that they befriend the South Carolina Nurses Association on Facebook. TK posts very regularly. And her posts are kind of motivating for most of us. And it would be great to see more people utilizing social media and taking advantage of all this. So the first thing on our agenda today is to talk about Senate Bill 669, which was dropped on the Senate floor the very last day of session and really surprised everybody. And today, Deb Hopla is going to speak to us upon Senate Bill 669.
So hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Deborah Hopla, and I'm a professor at Francis Marion University. And I want to talk to you about this bill. You are often wondering, why in the world should I get involved? Well, it was during Nurses Week, the last 15 minutes of session, when Senator Danny Verden from the upstate took Bill 669, put it on the desk of Senator Tom Davis, and said, "Happy Nurses Week." And it was all about something that they call Team-Based Healthcare Act. However, when you look at this, this is directly taken from the AMA. The entire thing is from the AMA. When you look at it, it's, it sounds good, team-based care. However, it is problematic. It is very costly. And it's, it is archaic. It increases regulations for people. And if you've not had, if you've not had a chance to read it, I'm going to encourage you to do so. But I want to cover some major points of 669. It says, "To provide definitions related to team-based care and require APRNs, PAs, and anesthesia assistance to practice as a part of team-patient healthcare, regardless of practice settings." Which, if you go into the nuances of this, it creates a dual board of medical examiners and the Board of Nursing and the South Carolina Department of Public Health. And they have to create a report with recommendations regarding guidelines and incentives, meaning that if you own your own practice, you're going to have to pay this team. They issue a report every year. And in looking at this, when you go into the 669, it defines physician care team physician as someone actively licensed to practice medicine in the state and practicing medicine within a geographic boundary of this, of this state. It provides leadership and collaboration and consultation for and care of all patients as part of the patient care team. They go on to define supervision of PAs and APRN practice, CRNAs, anesthesia assistance. And that regardless of the practice setting in Section 40-48-20 or the corporate structure, meaning you're, you own the practice, practice ownership, that you must, you must have a physician that you pay that clearly delineates how patient care team physician will fulfill obligations of. They must see the patient periodically. They must, according to this, do scheduled reviews and evaluations. They must disclose to the patient in writing at the very beginning of the, of the encounter that they are an APRN. And if you have a doctorate, you cannot call yourself, like I have a doctorate, cannot call yourself Dr. Hopla without saying first and documenting in the chart that I informed the patient, I am an APRN. Under the Louis Blackman Act, we already have to delineate on our badge. On my coat, it says, "Dr. Deborah Hopla, Advanced Practice Nurse." And on my badge at Hope Health, it says the same thing when I see patients. And I tell people, "Hi, I'm Dr. Hopla. I'm a family nurse practitioner." But they want it documented. That you must give in writing to the patient at the initial encounter and at least annually, the name of the patient care team physician, how to contact him. And throughout this whole thing, they use the term pronoun "him" and "he." And it must be posted in a conspicuous location easily viewed by patients and on any websites you have and all sites where you treat patients as a patient care team physician. It says that the patient care team physician must be available during all hours when care is offered to patients. So if the physician goes out of the country, you can't see patients because they have to be available. And again, even if you own your own practice, they delineate here that you will fall under this patient healthcare committee. This committee will consist of five MDs, two NPs, two PAs, and one anesthesia assistant. If your, if your physician leaves practice, dies, becomes disabled, and you can't find someone to be the team physician, then they will, the committee will have an emergency meeting and appoint somebody within five days. But again, that's only until you find someone. And this is all under Senate Bill 669. And looking at this, the committee shall meet two times annually or as often as required. And with a quorum consisting of eight members, one person will be a public member appointed by the governor. Random audits, joint advisory opinions from this, this committee by the Board of Nursing and by the Board of Medical Examiners. And again, review all documents, conduct hearings, keeps records, has annual reports, comes up with their own guidelines that you must follow. It says also, one of the nuances in Section 40-48-10, it says incentives that this particularly, this physician practicing as a part of a patient care team, particularly in primary care in rural and underserved areas, but not limited to. People with loan or grant programs, people with, with primary care services, telehealth. Looking at all of the areas, you will be required to report to this committee. And when you're looking at this, it takes regulations to a whole nother level. There's only been one state, one state that has adopted this language. And they are trying to unwind this model because more than a dozen other states have rejected this team-based licensure. It takes us backwards. It causes undue regulations. And it's quite costly. We already don't have enough physicians to go around. And this is another level of trying to assert authority and to cause people to have to pay more. And again, if you think it won't belong to you, you are sadly mistaken. Right now, it's only offered by Senator Danny Verden. We don't know why he's done this. We have no idea why he has done this. But I can tell you that if people don't speak up and talk to their legislators, the South Carolina Medical Association is beating the door everywhere about Senate Bill 669. And I think we have some questions in the chat. I think Leslie has definitely answered that one. Okay? Any other questions that I can answer?
Debbie, you might want to repeat the question and the answer.
Yeah. So, so somebody said, it says, "SCNA, did something in particular spark this new bill?" The answer is yes. The South Carolina Medical Association does not want full practice authority in this state. When you consider the fact that every MD that oversees NPs and PAs, if they have six people on their license, according to our survey, the average cost for NPs was $2,000 to $3,000 a month. When you're talking about six for 12 months, that's over $144,000 a year to sign a piece of paper. Always follow the money. You'll probably have heard that before. And again, it's about money. So yes, the gravy train needs to stop. Okay, there's a new question. Let's see. Yes, it's very, very sad. Someone said, "This is sad." And, and this is insane. It may be insane, but unless people speak up, this can be possible because all they're hearing is the South Carolina Medical Association. They've got to hear from APRNs. And people have got to share and start talking to legislators. Email, call. Let them know that you oppose Senate Bill 669 and that in this state, we need to have Senate Bill 45 and House Bill 3580 go forward.
And the way to mobilize the troops is like what Debbie said. Call your legislator. We, well, first of all, if you have a network of APRNs in your area, email them. Tell them about this bill. Tell them about the full practice bill. A ton of documents, talking points, the whole nine yards for all of these bills, so to speak. And you all need to call your legislators. Go meet with them, email them. But make sure they all know what to say. Do you have a template? Yes, we put a template in there for a letter as well as what to say at a Senate hearing. And I believe TK is going to go over some pointers if you decide you want to speak at a hearing for these bills. So yes, we have all of that. But we can send another template out. And I'll, we can send that to Rosie, and she can put it on the SCNA website in a folder I believe she's developed. And then we can also put that on the Coalition website. All of these documents are on both websites. But you all need to mobilize because there's only seven of us. And we can't do all, we can't do all the work. You all need to call your legislators.
This is about your practice. Yeah. This is about your practice. This is about your future. This is about the future of healthcare in South Carolina. We have got to change this F in healthcare to a better grade of healthcare. And we can only do that by moving forward. We already know that the APRNs cover our state in the rural areas. That is one of the things that, that is required, rural and underserved. And we're doing that. But you're not going to be able to do that because they specifically outline rural and underserved areas that you will have this team and a physician at the head.
It's so ridiculous. They're going to, they want to review 7,000, 8,000 practice collaborative agreements. That is ridiculous. And I just want to point out, like what we said earlier, if this bill passes, the value and our fees or our income, but mostly the value of what we contribute will go down the tubes. And hopefully, that will get everybody's attention. Because it sounds good, but it isn't. It's a terrible bill.
And South Carolina also already rates as an F in healthcare. And how much lower can we afford to go before we turn this around? And I think it's going to be nurses who will, who will do it. Because clearly, the MDs are not focused on improving patient care. They're focused, their time and their money on restricting the work that nurses and APRNs do.
And we sent that, we sent two documents that the AMA posted that SCMA, the Medical Association, is following. And that's that Scope Creep document. But there's priorities.
Stephanie, I think you just broke up.
Yeah. So the SCMA, we have on the SCNA site, the South Carolina Nurses Association site, the fact that, that promoting physician-led care is one of their initiatives and preventing Scope Creep of practice and prevention of physician burnout and fixing prior authorization is where their advocacy lies, not in changing this F in healthcare. And it's not about the patients. It's all about being the star of the show. And.
Well, it's all about themselves.
Yeah.
About restricting others, making technology work for them, getting better reimbursement, blah, blah, blah. So anyway.
That's 669. Yeah. Please share with your friends.
Right. And the data show in this state that the workforce data from AHAC, not us, but AHAC, shows that it's the nurse practitioners that are maintaining primary care in rural, especially with rural and underserved populations and the nurse midwives. So, and the clinical nurse specialists. It's us. So I'm going to talk about the full practice bill. I think that's.
That's what's up next.
Diddy?
Yeah, that's up next. Stephanie and Kim are going to talk about Senate Bill 45.
All right. So I'm going to let Kim talk quickly about, golly gee, you know, we added some language in there so that they could have some commitment authority if they had a patient that was a danger to themselves or others. So Kim, you go forward. Kim Jackson, Gilmore.
Okay, there we go. So having trouble unmuting. Anyway, I am Dr. Kim Gilmore. And I am a clinical nurse specialist in psych and adult nurse practitioner. And one of the things that we have a problem with as me being in private practice and practicing in other places is trying to do commitment papers on people who are a danger to themselves, a danger to others. We cannot do it. It has to be a doctor. But the funny part is.
Physician.
Well, yeah, a physician. Yeah. It has to be a physician. But the funny part is that when they commit the patient, we can do the assessment. So if we can do the assessment, surely we can commit them. You know, and in that assessment, you can say whether they're committable or not. But we can't do that part, too. Dr. Burgess, are you back? Do anyone have any questions about that? Okay, Mary, what does she say?
Please. Stephanie, are you up, Dr. Burgess? Oops, I think she just disappeared.
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Well, my thing keeps bleeping out. I don't know what the problem is because I have four bars. There must be a bad storm in Cleveland. The full practice bills. I'm sorry, Kim, you want to finish up?
I was pretty much finished with that portion of it.
Okay. But we did add language so that if you are seeing a patient that's a danger to themselves or others, that you have the authority to be one of the individual providers to make that commitment. Is that right, Kim? That's what y'all were looking for?
That's, that's correct.
So another, and the other changes that we put in the full practice bill, we did remove the practice agreement requirement for nurse practitioners, nurse midwives, and clinical nurse specialists who have at least 2,000 hours post-graduation. And of course, that is, they have to have an unencumbered license. We added language that we can sign for incontinence forms. Department of Health and Human Services has amended that form. But we just want to make sure that it's recognized in the Practice Act. We added a language that nurse practitioners and nurse midwives and CNSs can certify that school employees are TB negative or positive. We can do that for everybody else. And actually, RNs can do it. But apparently, DHEC has a reg that only a physician can do that. Not really sure why that happened. But we have to, we put something in there to amend the Nurse Practice Act so that we can do that. We added language that nurse midwives can admit their patients to acute care facilities. And that is still under negotiation as well as the 2,000 practice hours post-graduation. We added language that, that we can engage in ionized fluoroscopy because we do have some nurse practitioners that are working with interventional radiologists. We added language, again, that we can sign commitment papers. You know, if the patient is a danger to themselves or others. And we added language about the nurse practitioner, I'm sorry, the nurse midwife can prescribe and dispense C2 at their birthing centers because they do not have a pharmacist on site. We did remove language that medical acts would be approved by the medical board, especially for those of us who have full practice authority. And that the Board of Nursing would retain authority over the nurse practitioner, nurse midwives, and CNSs based on our national certification and successfully graduating from an accredited APRN program. So what did we not change? We didn't change anything about prescribing C5s through C2s. Those will remain in effect. We didn't change any telehealth provisions. We did get rid of the ratio for full practice. But for new graduates under the transition to practice hours, that ratio will remain the same, which is six APRNs to one physician or six APRNs and PAs, a combination of those new graduates to one physician at any given time. The collaborating physician for those individuals under transition to practice, full practice would remain in a collaborative arrangement and have to have a collaborative agreement with the nurse practitioner or nurse midwife or CNS. Let's, I think that's about it. Again, we changed nothing in the prescriptive authority except for the nurse midwives to be able to do those things if they have a birthing center. And everything, we all still have to have our national certification. So, and that companion bill to Senate Bill 45, which is sponsored by Senator Davis. And y'all need to get your senators on board as cosponsors. The companion bill in the House is 3580. So we have two tasks. We need to get our senators to sponsor Senate Bill 45 and our House members to sponsor 3580. We need to get their support. And we need to block 669, Senate Bill 669.
One of the things that you're going to hear is that this is a safety issue. This is not a safety issue. Dr. Burgess and I have spent several weekends, we spent several weekends pulling data from 1976 to 2023, '24. And we found that under any kind of problem with the Board of Nursing, it was less than 0.01%. You'll also hear about those practice hours. Oh, well, nurse practitioners don't do as many practice hours as MDs. We actually have a document that's on the SCNA site that talks about it, that most nurses come into APRN programs with 10,000 clinical hours practicing as registered nurses. They then complete about 2,000 hours before coming out and being, taking national certification boards and being able to practice to see patients. And again, we also surveyed every state that has practice hours. People say, "How did you come up with these practice hours?" Well, one of the states, Connecticut, has over 6,000 practice hours demanded. Virginia has five years of practice hours. And we took.
Post-graduation.
Post-graduation, yes, post-graduation. So when we look at five years, 6,000 hours, we came up with the 2,000, which seemed to be the average of most states. To become an APRN compact state, you have to have 2,020 hours. But, but again, it's a negotiating point for us. And when people see us trying to negotiate, we're trying to get full practice authority for nurse practitioners, certified nurse midwives, and CNSs.
So, and I also want to point out, all those documents we sent to you, it has, there's one on the disciplinary cases from the Board of Nursing in this state. And just as Deb said, it's less than 0.01%. I mean, we're talking over 20 years of data. It's not like it's in the last couple of years. And that data matches the National Council's Boards of Nursing data for disciplining APRNs. There's a document on there, Transition to Practice Hours. And we did a state-by-state analysis. So, and you'll see the list of the practice hours by state, what they require, how many.
It said, "Did we include full practice authority for CRNAs? We did not."
No. They have their own separate bill. They're a different focus. You know, they do acute care. They do some pain management. But our focus is really on primary care, rural healthcare, and serving underserved populations to keep them out of the emergency room.
Maternity care and.
Right.
And psych mental health.
And pediatric care. And we also included a document. I think it's a four-pager. And we also included a document, I think it's a four pager. It has all the lit review that you might want. Um, it's in that list of documents. We also have a document in there. I think it's in that four pager that talks about the different counties that have, I think there's what seventeen counties with no psychiatrists. There are fourteen counties with no pediatricians. Anyways, that data is in that document. And that data came from AHEC. So you all have got to start talking to your House members and your Senate members and get your colleagues fired up. I mean, we're trying our best, but there's only seven of us, y'all.
Yeah, and when you look at the data, as as Dr. Burgess pointed out, there's twenty-two counties with fewer than three active family practice physicians per ten thousand population. Fifteen counties with zero, zero OB-GYNs per ten thousand women ages fifteen to forty-four. Ten counties with zero, no active pediatric physicians per ten thousand ages zero to seventeen. Seventeen counties with fewer than three active pediatric physicians per ten thousand, population zero to seventeen. Seventeen counties with zero, zero active general psychiatry physicians. Twenty-seven counties with fewer than three general psychiatry physicians per ten thousand population. South Carolina needs APRNs and APRNs can make a difference in healthcare.
Right. And the data also shows that by the year twenty thirty, they're projecting another eight hundred and fifteen um shortage of physicians. And that's additionally, that's on top of what we always have, what we have a shortage of already. So this is an additional shortage of eight hundred and fifteen physicians who can take care of these populations.
We we also are not clear yet on what the pending Medicaid cuts to our state government will, how that will affect the hospitals and how that will affect uh patients who rely on Medicaid, predominantly uh children and pregnant women. So we don't know the effect of those cuts just yet, but it's projected to be very severe, especially on the hospitals uh leading to hospital closure, uh which also means loss of jobs.
Right. And and usually hospitals are a huge um employing agency for counties. And um they also pay taxes. So that's also a tax base for those counties. Those hospitals close. That's really devastating to those small counties.
And Kathy Murphy said, we have to take into consideration the influx of the number of people moving to South Carolina every year. And that is so true. Um, again, I just came back from Canada and, you know, people talk about universal healthcare. However, there in Canada, they have the same problems we have in the US. They they don't have enough physicians. They have a currently a two point three million people without any healthcare provider at all. And getting things done there is abysmal. So I'm hoping to report on that later on. Um, Vanessa said she used to live in Honduras, serving in a hospital in the middle of the jungle. And we have similar access to healthcare as those in rural villages. And I agree with you, Vanessa. Good point. You know, people are in deserts, maternity deserts, pediatric deserts, psych mental health deserts. And we have got to make a difference. And they have got to let this regulatory problem go.
And they're in primary care deserts as well. I mean, just because somebody has a primary practice doesn't mean they're taking Medicaid or Medicare.
It says, Deborah says, who knows any physicians who are on the side of APRNs who could have a strong voice in the AMA? We have many physicians that have given us letters that we're taking to the legislator that are in support of APRNs. They know what kind of job we do. They stand in support of us. And so if you know someone, we want to hear that. We want a letter from them because the more letters we have, the better.
And Dr. Hopple, I just want to say one quick thing about like, because it's mentioned the AMA. And I know this becomes this kind of unspoken thing, but one of the things that drives the AMA is money. And they are paying members of their membership. And so one of the things that if you are on this call and you are not a member of South Carolina Nurses Association, I beg you and plead with you to do that because that money that pays your membership also pays our lobbyists. Our lobbyist is the lobbyist that we we share with the coalition who does the work, who talks um and moves us forward to legislators. We also pay for the ads, the email marketing, um in a sense, paying for this town hall. So if you are not a member, that fifteen dollars a month goes a long way to moving us forward, getting us where we want to be. And so I know a lot of people are like, what can we do? What can we do? That is low hanging fruit.
It is. And what we'll do is we'll put a document together and give it to Rosie and we'll put it on the Coalition website. What can you do? And we will list out things for you to do that are action items that you all need to take care of. And one of them will be join the Coalition, which is, you know, you can make a hundred dollar contribution for the year. I mean, you could make less than that. But we, you know, it's like Nikita said, we need the money. You can join SCNA. It's fifteen bucks a month. I have been a member of SCNA since nineteen eighty-three. That's a long time.
All of the members of the Coalition, all of us are members of SCNA. We support SCNA. The members of the Coalition don't take a dime. All of the money that is donated goes right back into supporting the lobbyist, uh Wanda Crotwell, who could not be with us tonight. And so we absolutely advise you to please, please, join SCNA and donate to the Coalition. Anybody that goes by Starbucks and buys a latte, you know, can can donate to the Coalition. It's going to help to your future and help the Coalition to be able to have our lobbyists there as our voice.
So what, if you look in the documents that we sent, one of them is called a myth document. And SCMA is putting out a myth document and we refuted it. So you need to read that document because it's all about, you know, what SCMA is saying about us, that we, you know, that we are able to practice at the top of our license, yada, yada, yada. But in actuality, we're not. You know, they're also saying that um uh that physicians are just signing onto an agreement and not providing collaboration. Well, you know, you need to read the document because we refuted everything in there that they are putting forth. Oh, there we go. Yeah. Um, so well, I can't move it up or down. Anyways, I want you all to read it because it does refute a lot of the things that SCMA, the Medical Association, is saying about us. And if you all want any of us to come speak to a local group, we can do that.
So if somebody asks where this document is located, if you look on the SCNA website, um Rosie Robinson has those documents and she has them available. And you'll be able to find these documents. Or you can look on the Coalition for Access to Healthcare. And we have these documents listed as well.
Correct. But again, if you want any of us to come talk to your group to fire up the troops, we're happy to do that. So my, here's my phone number, eight oh three five three zero ninety-eight ninety-nine. That's my cell phone. Nine eight nine nine. I don't know why it didn't do it. Eight oh three five three zero nine eight nine nine.
All right, it looks like Stephanie, you're breaking up again.
Do what now?
Stephanie, you're breaking up again.
Well, I don't know why, because I got
There you go.
All right, I'm going to shut up. TK is going to talk to you about how to do testimony, I believe.
She is. She's next up.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Will you post, yeah, ask Rosie to put my phone, yeah, ask Rosie to put my number in the chat.
Okay.
Get it there in just a second.
Yeah, she's working up right now. So um
All right.
I am going to um discuss testimony tips with you all. And before I do that, I do want to just reiterate those points that you heard because we want to, we're not going to beat a dead horse. But this horse is alive and well, and we need it to move and gallop through this, this um legislature that we have. So please understand that your voice matters, you being engaged matters. And once this work ends, there'll be more work to do. Nursing is evolving, and as we continue to evolve as a profession, there are more and more people trying to call themselves nurses who are trying to stop us from calling doctors, doctors who have earned, who haven't earned doctorate degrees. There's always an attack against the profession. And one of the biggest things that we do is we work in silo. And it kills us as a profession. The reason that the AMA has the amount of traction that they do because there's many of, there are many physicians who are not members of the AMA or who don't support the AMA. But those physicians, you don't see them out front having a different conversation. You don't see them in any way separate. No matter what group you belong to, if it's a, if it's a geographic group, if there is a um position focused group that you're a member of, just remember that the reason that the South Carolina Nurses Association exists is to work on behalf of every nurse in the state. And as we do that, every nursing issue in the state becomes our issue. So the work does not stop. We're going to get this bill passed. We're going to get forty-five passed. We are going to get Senate Bill thirty-five eighty passed. And then we're going to capitalize on that momentum. But we need each and every one of you. So I can't stress that enough. Please make sure that you are engaging and that when you get off this call, that you go and call and tell a friend. You have to talk to somebody else because right now there are about sixty plus of us on this call. There are more than, I can't give you the exact number, eight thousand um APRNs in the state. And we maybe put our hands on about a couple hundred of them. So we need each of you to reach out to one of your APRN colleagues and let them know about this work and let them know how vital it is, that they go on the website, that they check out the talking points, that they make sure they understand how to explain the bill, all of those things. And then we need you to tell them to tell somebody else so that we can get all eight thousand nurses, all eight thousand APRNs in this state. Because without them and without you, our voices aren't heard. Ten, twelve of us showing up doesn't move the needle. But when hundreds of us show up in droves, we move the needle. And if you are an REN that is on this call, that may be a doctorially prepared REN, and maybe you're not an advanced practice nurse, remember that the work that is being done for our advanced practice colleagues impacts you too. So you can't turn away from that either. So it's everybody's job. If you call yourself a nurse, it's your job to make sure that you're showing up in this space. So I just wanted to start with that really, really quick. I'm going to go through a couple testimony tips. Um, and I'm not going to belabor them. I tried to make sure I put put bullet points because I'll start talking and and won't stop. Number one, make it personal. And when I say personal, I don't mean tell them about your mommy and your daddy and your grow up on a farm in West Virginia or anything like that. But I am a, I am an advanced practice nurse. I work in this setting. These are the types of patients that I see. And if you're talking to your lawmaker that you live in their area, I take care of your constituents. My job is to care for your constituents, for the people who make sure that you are here, kind sir or kind ma'am, right? Make it very quick. That story needs to be like one to two minutes max. Remember, when you get in front of a lawmaker, you rarely have more than about a fifteen minute window. Um, sometimes it can be a little more, sometimes a little less. If you've been around as long as, like Dr. Burgess, Dr. Burgess can get in and get a forty-five minute meeting. She can get an hour meeting. But for the rest of us, we may be able to get a fifteen minute meeting. So we want to make sure you capitalize on that time that you have, right? So first and foremost, making sure that you're concise, giving up one to two um minutes. Be emotional, but not so emotional that you're over there crying. But remember, you want a story to resonate with them. So I remember going, and this is a federal piece of um of federal conversation, but I went to go um to do some lobby work for, in Joe Wilson's office in um DC. The first thing I asked him about before I, before I came in and started talking about his, that's right, um, that, that's right. Show your passion for for nursing and and the healthcare profession. But the first thing I said to him before I said anything about why we were there, the first thing I said was, how are your knees doing, sir? I know you had knee surgery. Did you have an APRN taking care of you while you, after your knee surgery? He said, as a matter of fact, I did in my, in my primary care office. I said, I bet you did. You got great care, didn't you? That, in that moment, it took me ten seconds to open the door to a conversation and block out some of those barriers that would automatically come. So that's number one. Make sure you focus on things that, on their constituents. I said, that be very straightforward. Please do not use medical jargon. Don't go in there and saying APRNs and MPs and advanced practice registered nurses, certified nurse midwives, clinical nurse specialists, because they don't know what these people do. And they don't know what the acronyms are oftentimes. So be clear on what you're talking about. If you're going to testify, prepare about a two to three minute testimony and make sure you've practiced it. Make sure you practiced it. Don't let the first time you you go up there is the first time you read what you wrote down. And if you decide to let chatter help you out, I call him chatter, ChatGPT. If you decide to let chatter help you out to make yourselves more organized or whatever it is you do, please take the time to read it before you go up there. You don't want to be stumbling over your words. You want to be very, very straight to the point as you're talking. Um, make sure you lead with why this matters. Why does it matter that APRNs need to have full practice authority, full practice autonomy? Why does that matter? So then you start talking about some of the statistics that they talked about earlier. You talk about where they, where they're located. When you talk to Senator Burton and we talked about his six-sixty-nine bill, we want to ask him about the people that he represents and how advanced practice nurses are taking care of people in his own backyard. Um, leave room for questions and ask them before you leave. Are there any questions that you'd like to have of me? You want to offer yourself as a resource to lawmakers because remember, they don't know. They really don't. I met with um Senator um uh Brad, why can't I think of Brad's name? Hato.
Hato.
Hato um last week, along with um Sessions, with Representative Sessions. And I had an opportunity to talk with both of them just for a few minutes. And those few minutes were, here's what we need, here's what's going on. What questions do you have of me? Because I know this may be foreign information. And both of them had some really poignant questions. So allow that that lawmaker to have some questions and make sure that you're able to answer them. And if you're not able to answer them in that moment, don't make up something. Don't create some brand new story in your head. Let them know, I don't have the exact answer to that, but I will make sure that you get that information back. I will ensure that I get that information back to your office as promptly as possible. Always be respectful, um even if they aren't. Even if they aren't. That, we hope that they always will be, but there will be times that you will feel dismissed or you will feel like a lawmaker is not hearing you. Still be respectful. Still get your point across in a way that matters. Allow them to speak and go ahead about your day. Remember that the ballot box is always where the answers are at the end of the day, okay? Um, don't speak negatively about other providers. We don't need to say the doctors this are, the physicians this, the physicians that. We don't need to tear them down. What we need to do is build ourselves up and we need to show and refute things that are not correct. Okay, so don't go in there and say, well, the doc, the, the, the MDs just don't want us, so they just, they don't like us or they're, they're against us. We don't have to say that. We can say, according to the American, to the South Carolina Medical Association, nurse prac- nurse practitioners have much higher rates of um of infections. I'm just, I'm throwing something out there. And then you can say, according to what the, the South Carolina Medical Association said here, I have evidence to show that that is not the case. The case is patients are well taken care of by nurse practitioners. Patients have better outcomes. That is how we go about this. Positive spin even on the negative, okay?
And that data is in that four pager document?
And you'll have, you'll have speaking, you'll have um talking points, you'll have the data that you need. But again, you're going to take all that big data that you have and you're going to bring it down to about two minutes. So you've got to make sure that everything that you say matters. No filler. You don't want to have a whole bunch of dead space. You want to get in there with the facts and get in there with what's happening and make sure they understand that. Um, you want to clearly, clearly say, one, I urge you to support the bill. And even furthermore, I would urge you to become a co-sponsor of the bill. You want their names in writing that you want their, that they sign on the dotted line, that I support this work. When I talked to Brad Hutso the other day, he said, oh, yeah, I've got yours, Nick, you're good. I said, I need your, I need your name on that bill, sir. When I talked to Brad Hutso the other day, he said, oh yeah, I've got yours, Nick, you're good. I said, I need your, I need your name on that bill, sir. Sir, I need, I need your name on that bill, please. I need your name on that bill. So he's like, come back and talk to me. Sure, we'll, we'll talk before, before the session is over. Exactly. That big ask is definitely vital. So make sure that you urge them to support the bills. Make sure you help them understand why they matter. Use local data, making sure it's South Carolina data. They don't care about what happened in New York. They wanna know about what's happening in their own backyards and how does it impact them. So when we talk about hospitals shutting down in, in Bamberg County or in this county or in that county, we wanna be able to speak to what's happening in their own backyards, not what's happening across the country. Um, of course, there, there are other stats and I'm not gonna go over those, but a couple of things. Full practice authority means quicker, cheaper, and more equitable care. Boom, boom, boom. You see how fast I said that? So you gotta think about elevator pitches. If I'm in the elevator and I've only got five seconds to get my point across, I'm gonna say full practice authority means quicker, cheaper, more equitable access to care. Now, and we're not talking about being partisan in any way, but if you're talking to a primarily Republican um, lawmaking body, one of the things that resonates for them is cheaper. Because they, they wanna hear, what is the fiscal aspect of that? So you wanna talk about decompressing E Rs. You wanna talk about not using urgent care in emergency, um, in emergency rooms as primary care. You wanna talk about less, less spending on Medicaid dollars because of things that, that would be preventive care. You wanna be able to speak to those things because those things are the things that make more sense to them. You can talk about to the cows come home, that it's the right thing to do because we care about people. But if you can't connect it to their why, just like you're connecting it to your why, it will never make sense. I always say, when you know your why, your what makes more sense. So please make sure you're thinking about that. Um, you also wanna talk about, um, you don't wanna, you don't wanna compare, again, like I said, other states. But you do want to say that there are other models in states similar to ours that this has worked. And you can say over twenty-seven states have adopted full practice authority and they've had positive outcomes. You don't have to say, specifically, don't say, don't say New York, twenty-nine, thank you. Don't say, don't say New York, don't say California, because that's not who they care about. But they do perk up a little bit when they hear what's happening in the Georgias and the North Carolinas and the Floridas. Because those are the states that our, our staff leave for. Those are the places when we have what we call professional nomads that decide to leave the state that they're in because they can't work to the top of their licensure and education. They leave our state for more favorable loans. So they're going to Timbuktu State because there I can work, have my clinic and take care of my patients without the tethers that come along with, um, with collaborative agreements. So we will make sure that you get these testimony tips in writing as well. They'll be added to, um, that same folder. So you can go in and get all the resources that you're going to need. In the interim, while we're getting ready for these, these hearings, make sure you go and pull all that information. Take that information and aggregate it in such a way that you can pare it down to a few minutes of testimony because during testimony, you usually only get two to three minutes. But then when we get hearings and it's a little bit more, when we have some of that open dialogue, remember if we get to sit down in a lawmaker's office, then you have that fifteen minute window. So you have a little bit more time to talk. So you wanna make sure you have a, a speech over here that's two, three minutes, bam, bam, bam. And then you wanna be able to have a little bit more meat over here that you can talk about. But in the interim, like I said, aggregate that information, connect it to your story, to your why. Make sure that you call your lawmakers so that they know you're coming and that they know that you're engaged. Make sure you call those bills out by name and number and tell them that you want them to co-sponsor and/or support those bills. Make sure you refute six sixty-nine in any possible way that you can. And most importantly, make sure that you appeal to their constituency so that they understand that the people that you serve are the people in their own backyard. That's all I have. Any questions? I know there was a lot and I could not read it all as fast. Um, what if you can't find a legislator under Golden City? Somebody put that in there. And if you still can't find it, reach out to, um, myself in the office and or Rosie. You can email me at executivedirector@scnurses.org. I will find your lawmaker for you, no worry. So we will make sure we help you with that. Um, I think.
One of the, one of the questions TK was about, um, talking about that whenever we have a subcommittee meeting, we're gonna have the subcommittee meeting in September. If you don't wanna speak, you don't have to speak, but showing up in numbers is vital. So we're thinking it's either September the tenth or the eleventh. We don't know for sure. But Wanda Crotwell said, we could let everybody know that the subcommittee hearing will be in September. And as you know, with legislation, it's the subcommittee hearing first, then full committee. And then you have to do the same in the House. And then you have, um, three times that it's heard on the floor and then the governor. We have the assurance that the governor is on board, but right now, put on your agenda, try to clear your calendar for September tenth or eleventh. We don't know when. We will put the word out. And if you have to take off from work, take off from work, but, but you don't have to speak. There's enough of us that have a voice that will speak. But please show up, wear your lab coat, wear your name tag, and show support for your profession. Encourage all of your friends to show up.
Definitely. And to echo that and just to add one more cherry on top to that, um, I'll give you just an example. The Workplace Violence Bill came up last year. And we showed up in droves. There was, it was standing room only. And the lawmakers made mention of how, how packed it was in the room. Showing up matters. Showing up to our, our legislative days matters, showing up to hearings matter. When we show up, they see us. But when two and three of us show up and it's the same two and three, they think that we're the only ones who care about this issue. So show up. This is, this is your livelihood. You have put in years and years of education and money to become an advanced practice registered nurse. Why would you not advocate for yourselves first? This is how you take care of your family. This is how you get to enjoy the life that you live. And I will tell you that I, I, I say this all the time, that service is the price that we pay for abundant living. And as nurses and nurse practitioners and certified nurse midwives and clinical nurse specialists and all the great things that we do in nursing, we have abundant lives, even in our challenges, we have abundant lives. But it's most important that we serve, so we have to keep showing up. So go online, get all the information, pull it together. If you're unsure of something, if you're scared of it, call us. We'll go over it with you. If you want to just take a, a few minutes and you want to do a little bit of a banter back and forth, just so you can kinda prep yourself, happy to do it. We'll do it with you. But you've gotta come, you gotta show up, and you gotta bring a friend. So that there's no room, we wanna be outside. We wanna be pouring out of the subcommittee room so much that they have to open up another room for people just to be able to sit down. So that's all I have. In this, and that's there's another question. I don't think there's anything else.
Good point, Andrea. We are stronger together.
Definitely. All right, Judy, I think we're gonna turn it on back to you.
So, um, I'd like to open it up for all the panel to discuss, um, preparing testimony, um, what to expect, um, when they do go into the Senate and your experiences as people who have testified before.
I'll go first. So I have testified before the subcommittee, full committee. Um, and I can tell you that you have exactly three minutes on a timer. Now, they have as long as they want to ask you questions. The first time that I presented in subcommittee, I did my little three-minute elevator speech, got my points in, asked the big ask, and forty-five minutes they drilled me. I had brought an entire galley of students with me and all I could think about is, dear God, don't let me screw up. But, but I can tell you that if you are prepared, you read your documents, you have your documents with you. And if they ask a question that you don't know, you say, I really don't know the answer to that, but I'll be happy to find the answer and get back with you. Would that be okay? Can I give you my contact information? Uh, can I have your contact information? So it is absolutely vital that people show up.
And Dr. Hopla, to that point, when you get that information, if you can't answer that question, make sure that that turnaround is quick.
Yes.
You don't want to let three weeks lag between the time that you said you're gonna get them information back and you actually do it. That turnaround needs to be very quick because you wanna keep that information top of mind for them.
You know, Dr. Burgess had to leave. Um, she had an event that she had to be at. But happy to entertain any questions that people might have.
I would also like to comment, a lot of people are nervous about what to wear. Um, you want to look professional businesslike, um, uh, if you have a white lab coat, if you have a lanyard specifically, like through one of the, um, bigger hospital systems or teaching institutions, those are things that will stand out. But you also wanna be comfortable, so, um, make sure that you have like comfortable shoes. Um, you're not feeling too hot, too cold. You know, these rooms can be one or the other. So you wanna be comfortable, but also very professional.
Well, we know the date. As soon as we know it, you will know it. Um, we're kinda in limbo right now. We, either the tenth or the eleventh. As Dr. Hopla said, please mark your calendars and just plan to be, be available. But check the SCNA website, check the Coalition website, follow us on Facebook, follow us on Instagram, follow us on LinkedIn, follow us on X. All the things, every, we will update it. As soon as we get that information, it will be out there. So check every day. You might find out some other cool information while you're doing that, but check every day. And as soon as we know it, we will make sure there's up there for you. And we'll send it out, emails as well too. Everybody who's participated in these, we will send it out to you in an email as well.
These hearings have a signup sheet. They limit the number of people who can speak. So if you're wanting to speak or planning to speak, be sure you get there, um, really early because those sheets will fill up fast.
Do we know whether they, whether there is an attempt to balance the pros and the cons? Or is it just a matter of who signs up, who gets there first? I think it's who get there first.
Yeah.
From experience.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, um, for or get side, one side gets more time than the other. It's whoever does with it, gets their name on there.
And this, that, getting your name on there is day of, is that correct? That's correct.
But I will tell you, once we know the date, we will be there when the doors open. I'll be standing outside before they unlock the Grissette building. We will be there when the doors open. Any other questions? Somebody else? I can't see that. Is there a blitz email or text sent to APRNs in general in the state regarding the subcommittee hearings? Or is this only specific to ANA members? So if you are a member of the South Carolina Nurses Association, you can opt into texting and we do send out things via text message. If you are a member of the association, we also send this out via email. We also put this on our social media pages. We also send this out to you in a blitz that comes out weekly. If you are a member of the Coalition, you're able to see these things on the Coalition website. Um, and the Coalition sends out emails. So, um, I will say it this way. Membership has its privileges. And regardless if you are a member or not, we still work for you and on behalf of you. But membership definitely has its privileges and it's worth it at the end of the day.
And if you happen to be a member and you know someone who's not a member, share, share with them. Blitz it out to your friends so that people can show up.
I would also like to add that the Upstate Nurse Practitioner Association also has a website. Um, and they also post everything there as well as to their Facebook pages. Um, it's a great group that provides continuing education and networking for the, um, um, APRNs in the upstate. And right now, um, it looks like the upstate group has members from seven counties.
Deborah Flanagan, in the past, the Coalition met with the SCMA, um, uh, many, many times. But in recent times, um, we have asked to meet with them and they have declined.
Um, to that same point, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jennifer, Jennifer, uh, Dr. Baumstark talked about the fact she's tried to talk to M Ds uh, during several task force meetings about the benefits and it seems to fall on deaf ears, but keep talking. One hundred percent, especially in, uh, your area of maternal child. We still, according to the March of Dimes, rank fourth in infant deaths and eight in maternal deaths. We have maternity deserts. We absolutely one hundred percent need to all keep talking about this. Because the new Certified Nurse Midwife Program at the University of South Carolina will definitely make a difference. But again, people don't know what they don't know. And people that are legislators have insurance. They had, their family members go where they can get, get care. I take care of people at a federally qualified healthcare center, people that are homeless, people that have no resources, as many of you do. And so you keep on talking because until it hits home to the legislators that those are their constituents that don't have that care. Marion County closed their OB services. Now they have to come to Florence, Sumter, Charleston. And their, uh, rates of maternity and infant deaths are abysmal. Kings Street has a number one place where infants die. One in every nine African-American babies die before the age of one. That is abysmal statistics. People need to know. Keep talking.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Oh, you made me shiver.
I would also like to add that we will continue to do these town hall meetings throughout the summer and fall, um, until we get our hearing and our bill passed. That's, that is how we're trying to get the word across and hopefully we'll get different people attending these meetings. And more and more, um, APRNs will know what's going on within the state of South Carolina.
Definitely. Um, one more thing I wanna just make sure I mentioned, I am in talks, um, to someone's point, to, um, sit down with the executive director from the South Carolina Medical Association. Um, I've said, I have sent many, many a message. And, um, have, it has fallen on some deaf ears, but I think that, um, there's been a recent conversation that may a little bit open the door. And basically what I've shared with them is this is not a us versus you. How can we work together? So I don't know what that's, if that's going to happen, but I'm going to keep trying to make that happen. Um, but I don't know who said it, but wherever you work, wherever you, if you don't, if you work for yourself, then you can't ask your leaders this. But if you don't, wherever else you work, find out if your organization is supportive of this work. And if they are, have them reach out to us so that we can make sure we have letters of support from them. I will tell you, um, if you work for the Prisma Health System, Prisma Health had a meeting just today about, um, yes, and I'm gonna say that too. Uh, but Prisma Health's leaders had a meeting today about, um, this bill. Um, the South Carolina Hospital Association has been very, very open and welcoming to this bill. We, with some, some changes and some caveats that we are working through and we're trying to figure that out and we'll get that done. But in re, in previous years, the Hospital Association was not engaged in this work in the way that they are now. They get it and understand that every time you shut out an advanced practice nurse, that you are finding yourself in a worse situation for your hospital. So, um, they had their legislative roundtable just last week and I, I will tell you, I was pleasantly surprised from that, what I heard. It, I was not what I was expecting. So that means that hospitals are starting to think about this more too. But wherever you work, they need to value you as an employee. And as they value you as an employee, part of that is making sure they value what you need to be, to work autonomously. So ask the question, do you all support this? Have you done a letter of support? Would you like me to do a letter of support on your behalf so you don't have to write it and all you gotta do is sign it? Whatever it takes, but we need as many people as possible. Whatever it takes. But we need as many people as possible behind us. We have the Convenience Care Association behind us. We have, um, CBS Care Clinics. Um, we have several of the insurance companies that are all on board behind this. But every other group that we can get that are behind this, the bigger our voice gets. So talk to the people that you work with and the people that you work for, please. Any information regarding LMC support? Um, I've had a few conversations with LMC, but I have not spoken with their legislative team, their GOVA team. I've talked to some of their senior VPs and some of their senior VPs are very much supportive, but, um, we need to get something in writing from them. We need to get something in writing from all the hospitals, from their CEO, their leadership, so that we can, we can push this through. I know, um, but I know for a fact Prisma had a meeting because someone reached out to me today about it. Any other questions? I think that's it, I see.
It looks like that's it for questions for this evening. I'd like to thank everybody for attending. I'd like to thank all our panelists for taking time out also. Um, and to SCNA for helping the Coalition sponsor this great town hall meeting and to let our voices be heard. So at this point, I guess we can close the meeting and let everybody get back to cooking dinner and getting their kids off to bed and planning their next weekend's events.
So this weekend, this weekend, call, call a lawmaker's office. Next week, call a lawmaker's office. That's what you're going to be doing. Make those calls and reach out to us if you need help. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.